Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, if I could ask you all to please take your seats so that we could get started. Welcome to Special Session One of the 21st IISS Shangri-La Dialogue. My name is Veerlan Owens and I'm the Executive Director of IISS Asia. And it's my honor to chair today's discussion on deterrence and reassurance in the Asia-Pacific. As Prime Minister Wong of Singapore stated in his inauguration earlier this month, "The era of unprecedented peace enjoyed since the end of the Cold War is over, and it will not return. In its place is a world of conflict and rivalry." Against this uncertain geopolitical backdrop, the region is witnessing increased defense spending and ambitions to further develop every country's military capabilities. Deterrence, of course, plays an important role in discouraging aggression. However, it can simultaneously also send unintended signals. Reassurance, then, helps to prevent these signals from driving an escalation spiral that could result in conflicts. This region faces multiple flashpoints for which a careful balance between deterrence and reassurance must be maintained. And the session will therefore consider how states in this region can best achieve that balance. Now, a few housekeeping rules before we get started. If you have not already done so, please insert your name badge with the microchip down into your microphone system on the side. Please do so, if you do so, and when you do so, hopefully. Your name will appear on the card in front of you for those of you sitting in the front row. For the rest of you, and for all of you, in fact, it will also crucially allow you to ask a question. So if you would like to ask a question, please press the speak button on your microphone. The light will then illuminate in green to show that you are in the queue here in my system in front of me. And then I'll be able to call on you during the Q and A to ask your question. But your microphone at that stage will not be on yet. It will only be on when I select your name. So when I do select your name to speak and when I call on you, your microphone will turn red, and then you will be invited to ask your question or give your statement. I'm delighted to announce our very distinguished panel here with us today. Joining me from my right to my left, which is also our speaking order, is Kasia Olinchen, Minister of Defense of the Netherlands; Admiral Samuel Paparo, Commander of the U.S. Indo-Pacific Command; Ambassador Tui Tiankai, former Vice Minister of Foreign Affairs, China; and last but certainly not least, Admiral Pierre Van Dier, Fais Chief of Defense Staff of France. Our esteemed speakers will each speak for around five minutes for their opening remarks, and then we will open for questions. But with no further ado, Minister Olinchen, over to you.
Thank you very much, and welcome to everyone. It's really good to be back. And I want to start by thanking IISS and Singapore, of course, for organizing this important dialogue once again. It is my third time here, actually. I'm really glad and honored. And I think, as I've come to recognize this event, that it is one of the most important security dialogues in the world. And it's crucial that we keep that dialogue going, to continue to talk even, and especially when perspectives, when they differ. And necessarily, they do, because we are in different regions with different cultures and different traditions. But what we all have recognized, I think, is that the world has become a more dangerous place. And the geopolitical landscape, it changes. And that means that old truths no longer hold true, that uncertainty, unpredictability, and instability, that they grow. And what does that mean for reassurance and deterrence in this world of swiftly shifting power dynamics? I think in an era of growing great power competition, that we see now increased muscle flexing. And reassurance and deterrence must come from cooperation. It must come from partnerships. And these partnerships, we have to build around our common interests. If we don't, we risk a race to the bottom. And in that situation, I think there will only be losers. So while for us, for the Netherlands, the European Union, and NATO have been the backbone of our security for decades, we know very well that the world is bigger than the European continent. Maritime security, the freedom of navigation, they are fundamental to the world's economy, and we recognize that. And that's why the Netherlands have contributed to, for instance, the missions in the Red Sea to keep shipping safe. And that's why one of our frigates, the Tromp, is currently in the Indo-Pacific and has passed through the Taiwan Straits this week. And we're also actively seeking cooperations with countries in other parts of the world, the Global South, if you will. This week, we signed a memorandum of understanding with the Palestinian Authority on security cooperation. And only last month, our special forces assisted their counterparts in West Africa during the annual flintlock exercise. Moreover, new security domains we have, but we must seek also in the new domains that we have to face, which are space, cyber, the protection of seabed, infrastructure. So, for example, next year, we are co-hosting with Korea the Second Edition of RE-Aimed, which is a summit, global summit, aimed at discussing the opportunities and challenges related to the military applications of artificial intelligence. And I know that for some here, the war in Ukraine seems further away than it does from my perspective, from the Netherlands, from Europe. But I'm thoroughly convinced that the outcome will have a profound impact on all of us and on the global security order. It has shaken all of our economies, but the most fundamental implications are, I think, deeper and even further reaching. With its invasions and also the brutalities that it commits every day, Russia has torn up the principles that underpin the international order: sovereignty, territorial integrity, and international humanitarian law. And though our perspectives may differ, these principles, old truths, if you like, I think we can rally around them, and we must. It goes to the core of why we will continue to support Ukraine throughout its struggle for survival. We've reassured Ukrainians through bilateral security arrangements, through political, financial, and military support. And we will continue to build its deterrence by modernizing its armed forces through the supply of modern weapons systems, like the F-16s and Patriot air defense systems. And it must be clear that military annexation of a free and democratic country is not acceptable, and that it will be met with staunch resistance. And it is why I will continue to call for support for Ukraine from the entire international community, and to discourage those who would support Russia, also implicitly. I think it's clear that as ministers of defense and as defense organizations and armed forces, we have a responsibility and we have a role to play. And while some aim to destabilize unions and alliances that keep us safe, to weaken us by dividing us, we choose the path of cooperation. Security is not built on defense and deterrence. I think that security is built on one main ingredient, and that ingredient is trust. And I think that we can achieve it by increasing the dialogue, trying to understand each other, those different perspectives. And events such as the one that we attend today, the Shangri-La Dialogue, they play a very important part in that. And I look forward to our further engagement. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Minister. Admiral, over to you.
Thank you. Thanks to IISS. This is my first Shangri-La Dialogue. I'm very honored to be here. Very honored to be here with my fellow panelists. And thank you, Minister, for your very salient words. I'll go quickly, because the power isn't in the dialogues. It ain't the Shangri-La monologues. Deterrence and assurance are the cornerstones of modern military strategy, works hand-in-hand to prevent conflict and maintain a stable order. Both seek peace, but each take a distinct approach. But they are, in fact, a synergy. Understanding the difference is crucial. Deterrence is our highest duty. It's that result of capability and will, and the potential adversary's awareness of the same. It relies on the potential enemies believing the risk, military defeat, but also economic loss, diplomatic isolation, or a combination of all the above outweighs any perceived gains. Deterrence is effective when it's credible. The adversary believes that the defending side will act on its threats. When it's capable, a robust military with the ability to project power globally and inflict significant damage on the aggressor is essential. And when it is integrated, modern deterrence strategies go beyond traditional military might. They encompass economic sanctions, cyber defense capabilities, diplomatic pressure coordinated across all government agency. This integrated deterrence approach makes aggression a much riskier proposition. Assurance focuses on building trust and confidence, as the minister said, with allies and partners. It intends to reassure allies and partners will come to their aid in the case of aggression, fostering stability within alliances and partnerships, and discourages potential aggressors who recognize the combined might and will of the coalitions and alliances. Maintaining a strong military presence, joint military exercises, the sharing of intelligence, demonstrating a concrete commitment to shared capability, we are never stronger than we are when we're together. Building strong political and economic ties between allies and partners strengthens the sense of shared purpose and discourages aggression in the first place. Collaborative efforts beyond military means, industry partnerships, and commerce cooperation across industry further solidifies partnerships. Inter-agency coordination. Effective assurance requires cooperation between military and civilian institutions. Sharing resources, expertise, planning across agencies strengthens the overall response capabilities. My friends, deterrence and assurance are not mutually exclusive, but in fact, are a synergy. A strong deterrent posture reassures allies and partners as it demonstrates the commitment to resisting aggression. Conversely, a robust network of alliances and partners strengthens deterrence by making the cost of an attack even higher for the potential aggressor. The 21st century presents new challenges for deterrence and assurance strategy. The rise of cyber warfare, the proliferation of ballistic missiles, advances in unmanned capabilities, and the emergence of non-state actors all complicate traditional methods. The rise of artificial intelligence, advances in compute. The rising integration of world economies. All of this presents grave challenges in the 21st century. Never have the costs of war been so high. This is a profound duty that rests on all of our shoulders. Deterrence and assurance is essential. And in the Indo-Pacific, in the Indo-Pacific century, that duty rests on each and every one of us. I'll pass on to my fellow panelists.
Thank you very much, Admiral. Ambassador.
Thank you, madam. It's a great honor for me to join this distinguished panel. Let me take the opportunity to express my appreciation to Admiral Paparo for the wonderful and candid and constructive meetings we had in Honolulu when I was there with a group of retired P O A generals. We had a wonderful visit and wonderful meeting at the Indo-Pacific. And it was very kind of you to take us personally to the memorial for Arizona. It's a wonderful visit. So this is my fourth time to the Shangri-La Dialogue. But fortunately or unfortunately, we never run short of issues. It seems to me that the world is less stable and is quite uncertain. So we are supposed to discuss the theme of deterrence and reassurance at this session. There is a clear need for us to have a better understanding and try to achieve a balance between the two. But at the same time, I believe deterrence or assurance, they are basically the tools, the approaches. So they are more of a tactical nature and determined by a broader, bigger strategy. And what is really strategic and what is really important, I believe, is our perception of the world, our perception of ourselves and our relationship in this fast-changing world. That will determine our approach. That will make the difference. If we see each other as potential or real rivals, if we will see today's world still as an arena for great power rivalries, if we believe that we should be engaging in zero-sum rivalries among the major powers, then it makes all the difference. Then we might have to resort to deterrence more than necessary. And deterrence could very well escalate into real threat or even open conflicts. And under such circumstances, assurances could not be very convincing. Sometimes it could even be hypocritical even. So in order to achieve a proper balance between the two, and in order really to have the right approach towards the changing global security situation, we have to have a clear idea, have a good understanding of our perception of the world, of ourselves, and of our relationship. If our goal is to work together for a more stable, more peaceful, more prosperous world, if our goal is to build a community of nations for a better and shared future, if we see each other despite all the differences we might have, because there are always differences amongst, but despite all the differences, we still see each other as potential partners, as people we can work with for the common goal, for the common interest, then I don't think we really need very much deterrence. If we could have such mutual confidence, then we are already giving each other sufficient reassurance. That would be very basis, very good foundation for us to work together to confront the global challenges, including things like AI and climate change and a number of others. So we have to have a clear idea what kind of world, what kind of a security structure, architecture, we want to build. This global architecture, if it works, has to be balanced, effective, and sustainable. And the security we seek has to be common, comprehensive, cooperative, and sustainable. Otherwise, there's no end to the conflicts. We are still talking about the conflict in Ukraine. Unfortunately, we still don't see any end to it. We in China, we are working very hard, and we always stand for a peaceful solution. We want people to come back to the negotiating table to find a peaceful solution to the conflict. And what is happening in the Middle East? Civilians, innocent people, are dying every day. The international community seem to be paralyzed, although there is very strong public opinion in all countries. But what is happening is still happening. So we have to look at these ongoing conflicts and look at the real serious global security challenges and aim at building a new kind of security architecture that is really balanced and effective, that will work for the interests of all the countries, that will take care of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of all the countries, take care of the legitimate security concerns of all countries. Otherwise, we'll have an endless list of issues for the Shangri-La Dialogue. I'm in full support of the dialogue, of course. But I hope we could have some more positive and constructive issues on the list. Thank you, madam.
Thank you, Ambassador. Admiral Van Dier.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be there for the third time. First, I'd like to come back on the accurate definition of words we employ in the theme of this discussion. Deterrence. In French, we have a single word, and you have two words in English: dissuasion or deterrence. For the French policymakers and practitioners, dissuasion is strongly and exclusively associated with nuclear rhetoric. So I will therefore limit my speech on the conventional side of deterrence that I could express, quite as Admiral Paparo said, as a defensive strategy, which is to prevent an aggressor to commit in confrontation, to demonstrate the futility and catastrophic consequences of launching a war, and so undermine the potential benefits of an attack. We can remind the words of Winston Churchill in the '40s when he said, "Never, never, never believe any war to be smooth and easy. The statesmen who yield to war must realize that once the signal is given, he is no longer the master of policy, but the slave of unforeseeable and uncontrollable events." Second term, reassurance. We could say that it explains it's a given guarantee to an ally to stand by him if deterrence fails. Reassurance contributes to deterrence in the way it complicates aggressor's calculus. Nevertheless, history and recent events, especially in Europe, show that it's neither an easy trip nor a 100% safe strategy. The French experience during the Cold War, particularly in the '80s, illustrates how dissymetrisation, would say, the introduction of additional player in the strategic equation can provide alternative pathways for managing crisis and preventing uncontrolled escalation. At a time when risks of strategic decoupling and the escalation of nuclear stockpiles were placing Western Europe at a significant risk, this approach suggested that involving actors with credible influence and freedom of maneuver could inherently contribute to regional stability and de-escalation. This method underscores the importance of diversified strategic interactions, similar to adding an additional player on the chessboard, or I would say here, a Go game board, thus offering more nuanced and controlled responses to potential conflicts. In a period of rise of tensions, we have to avoid automatic escalation scenarios and prefer thickening credibility, determination, and strategic uncertainty. This uncertainty demands regional actors to develop robust multilateral partnerships, extending beyond military training and procurement to include diplomatic engagements and public communications. By showcasing the availability of multiple strategic options, these actors can effectively signal their capability and resolve thereby deterring adversaries and contributing to regional stability. In practical, France's commitment in the region aims to develop and strengthen the strategic options of its partners. This involvement is both bilateral and multilateral and is characterized by a Korean strategy that integrates field deployments, such as enhanced and durable presence, patrols in the broader region, and exercises with local and foreign partners. It also aims to develop industrial partnerships and consistent diplomatic posture to demonstrate solidarity and resolve, and finally, alignment of interests. At the same time, we aim at helping our partners to develop the means required for a true sovereignty, which helps them to play their role of third and independent party in the region, as I underlined it previously. Regarding practical handling of flashpoints, it is crucial to establish daily codes of conduct, foster mutual understanding of sensitive issues, and maintain reliable channels of communication. These tools are difficult to build and require a consistent coordination between field operations and political directives. Ensuring that military actions and political intentions are consistently communicated and understood by all parties involved is essential for preventing misunderstandings and managing crisis effectively. In conclusion, building on the strategy of deterrence, nations can emphasize the importance of stability and deterring aggression through a combination of military preparedness, strategic communication, and diplomatic initiatives. In this context, the participation of responsible and credible third parties can amplify the effectiveness of deterrence while also providing reassurance to all parties involved. I thank you.
Thank you, Admiral, for those excellent remarks and for the rest of my panel as well. Just perhaps to get us started, while I wait for everyone to submit their questions, and I see they're coming in fast, do each of you think that the current state of reassurance is actually sufficient? And if not, then what is the ideal tactic that you think, or maneuver, or measure that you can imagine that you would like to see actually take place? Perhaps we'll start with Minister Olinchen first.
It's a difficult question, frankly. If we knew, the world would be a better place. But I think it's right, you have to find the right balance. And of course, if you look at history, you have ups and downs. And I think we must learn lessons. And what we have learned in Europe is at least that after the Cold War, we changed our posture and we decreased our budgets for defense. We sought partnerships with countries that were previously behind the Iron Curtain. You know, I think we all respected more the right for self-determination. We built trade ties, not only within the European Union, but also with our partner countries and partner allies and alliances. And that was the way forward. We thought that that was the way also to bring prosperity and thereby peace. But if you look at where we are now in Europe with a large-scale war on the European continent, we must conclude that we did not succeed in finding the right balance between reassurance and building the other ties and deterrence. Because if the deterrence balance had been right, then we should have been able to prevent this large-scale war on our continent. So we have to find the right balance, which is at least more deterrence than we had, and also learn from not decreasing it too much, because you always have to be able to scale it up again. So that is the hard lesson that we're learning now.
Thank you, Admiral.
Well, it always varies among circumstances, but it begins with sovereignty and sovereign will among states, and it varies among conditions. Sometimes it happens among treaties, among treaty allies. And there's Article Five among treaty allies, where they pledge to come to one another's defense. And sometimes it is ad hoc within coalitions. And then it comes down to policy, and it comes down to resources based on each sovereign nation's resources. And reassurance goes both ways, according to policies and resources based on those conditions. And it's always iterative, based on those conditions. And it is a dance, you know? It's a dance according to conditions. And it's implemented by diplomats, and it's implemented by commanders every day, and hence the discussion of the interagency, and hence the discussion within policy, and hence the discussion among commanders at all times, which is why the integrated approach is so important. And so, you know, the question is, is it ever, is it enough? It depends entirely among the conditions. But to be always, always seeking that proper alignment, Colin S. Gray, the British strategist, said, you know, "Policy is king," is what he once said, I think is really important, and always getting that balance right.
So, as Minister said, if we had the solution, we would have already applied it. Peace, I think peace is not an auto-stable principle. In fact, it's a result of pressure and counterpressure. In fact, it's a result of pressure and counterpressure. Each living system on this planet is a defense system, even a bacterium has defense systems. And so, peace, and somehow as war, is the expression of a sort of dialogue. So I think first is to re-establish dialogue. When dialogue is impossible, danger is there. And so, I think this dialogue is, the core point of dialogue, is a discussion about interests, own interests and global interests. And someone said we are in a global competition. I think peace is the result of dealing with interests in this competition. So really, I think the discussion is the core, and confident discussion is the core of stability, and perhaps, and it's what we do here in Shangri-La, is trying to find ways to have deeper, deeper discussions.
And Ambassador, do you have any additional comments?
Thank you. I just realized that I am the only diplomat on the panel, and I'm the only Asian on the panel. So first of all, I fully understand why our American-European friends are so concerned about deterrence and all these things. Because actually, in the 20th century, two world wars started in Europe. And you still have ongoing conflicts. It's very unfortunate. And Dr. Henry Kissinger, I respect him very much. He was a mastermind on ideas like deterrence and so on. But today, we are living in the 21st century, and we really have to think about it. Is that kind of approach really served the purpose of a global peace? Is this really what our people want? Building military blocks, having two major military blocks confronting each other with very high risks of real war or even nuclear wars? Is that a right approach, indeed? And by comparison, here in Asia-Pacific, of course, we also had our part of very severe wars here, even during the Cold War years. Two biggest hot wars took place in Asia, the Korean War and the Vietnam War. But we, in Asia, we have learned the lessons. So for the last few decades, we have worked very effectively together to build peace, to make peace and build peace, and to promote prosperity. We developed the kind of people call the ASEAN Way, the idea of ASEAN centrality. So we have made very effective mechanism for regional cooperation, despite all the differences we still have. If you look at very closely at the differences among Asian countries, there are numerous of them, but we see a larger, much larger common interest, and we find a new approach. Maybe we could compare our lessons sometime. Thank you.
Ambassador, my dear friend, you're speaking as if all the panelists here want to fight. You're speaking to three people, and that is absolutely the last thing that we want to do. We are the life insurance policy against fighting. We have children in uniform, and that is the very last thing that we do. We're sitting on a panel called deterrence and reassurance. And the very first statement that we made was that deterrence is our first duty. In fact, all of human history has said that we don't want to fight. And so the assumption somehow that all of us want to fight, and you are the lone human being on this panel that wants peace, if that is the point that you're making, my dear friend, that is not, that is not the case. We want peace every bit as much as you do, my friend.
Well, Admiral, I certainly understand you. I am not questioning your personal intentions or your willingness, your devotion to peace. I have no question about that. But I remember Dr. Henry Kissinger told me time and again that the First World War started without anybody planning for it. It just step by step. Small conflict became a global war. So we have to warn against that, despite all the good intentions, things could still go wrong.
Dr. Kissinger told me two months before he died, "I approve of what you're doing, and I think you should be as strong as you possibly can until such time as you have the ability to have a more constructive bilateral relationship."
I'm glad that we're getting the dialogue going. We are definitely going to turn to questions now. So if I could call on Jennifer Parker.
I'm Jennifer Parker from the National Security College in Australia. And my question is really for Ambassador Q, but the whole panel can take it. You talked in your introductory remarks about building a new security architecture that is balanced and effective. I'm wondering if you could expand on what you think that new security architecture looks like. Thank you.
I'll take two more questions. Ishan Tharoor.
Thank you. Ishan Tharoor at The Washington Post. My question is for Minister Olenkien. You, in discussing the war in Ukraine, you raised the understandable and justifiable appeal to principles of international law, international humanitarian law. And I was wondering, given what we've seen over the last half year in the Middle East, whether you see the tension, and this is certainly the perspective of many outside of the West, between these appeals for solidarity with Ukraine on the principles of humanitarian international law, and the ways in which the West, or certain powers in the West, are applying those same principles or not applying them in the Middle East?
Thank you. And then from the double I double S, Antoine Levick.
Thank you. Antoine Levick from the double I double S, South Asia. I want to ask Admiral Papparo, what you meant when you said that intelligence sharing was, was good and implied that it was stabilizing. This is something which treaty allies can do fairly seamlessly, but when I work on India, I see that this is not quite as easy to organize. So first, it's a question of how do you promote sharing across a different set of players with which the US has a different set of relationships? And secondly, is it possible to promote some degree of transparency about what intelligence sharing is not? Because looking at South Asia, I see concerns being expressed in Pakistan, for example, about the impact of intelligence sharing with India. And giving some form of reassurance about what intelligence sharing is not would go some ways to addressing some of the concerns. And I'm sure similar concerns can be expressed across the wider Indo-Pacific theater. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll turn to Ambassador Tsui first, then to Minister Olenkien and to Admiral Papparo. And Admiral Van Die, I am sure that there are also quite a few themes in there that potentially you would like to comment on as well. So Ambassador, over to you first.
Well, thank you. I think in terms of security architecture, actually, we already have something, like the United Nations Security Council. That was something built on the basis of the lesson the humanity learned from the two world wars. And although people may say this is not a very fair structure, but still, there's a balanced approach to the security needs of all the major countries. It could work, and it worked in the past from time to time. But when there is severe disagreement among the major countries, when they have totally different world outlook, then even the Security Council could fail. This is very unfortunate. So even for some of the ongoing conflicts, if people continue to see one of the major countries, one of the P5 countries as an enemy state, then there's no hope that we could end the conflicts very soon, we could restore peace very soon. We have to realize that all the security interests, the legitimate security interests of all the countries should be taken care of, and there should be a balanced approach. Nobody should have the illusion that once they have the upper hand in the battlefield, then they will force the other side to calm down and negotiate. There's no end to it. It could only end in continued war and arms race. So in order to have a more effective security architecture, to improve the existing architecture, we have to have some new concept about what security really means for us and how to achieve this kind of security. We also have to take into consideration some of the emerging new security threats, like the AI. Of course, progress of technology is, should always be good for humanity, but there's such uncertainty about AI. That was one of the last things Dr. Henry Kissinger told us, that we should work on that together, not separately, but together. So we started both track one, track two dialogue with the United States on AI. So if we can build up the process, we continue to do these things that will promote and facilitate mutual understanding and mutual confidence, gradually, a new security architecture, a global security architecture, architecture might emerge as a rather of our joint efforts. I hope we could do it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Olenkien.
Thank you. Yes, I will respond to the question on Ukraine vis-à-vis Gaza, if I can sum it up like that. And of course, I understand the question. And I think if you boil down to the principle, then I think the principle that we see in the war in Ukraine is that it is an illegal war, that Russia had no right to invade Ukraine, and that Ukraine, in self-defense, has every right to fight the aggressor. And if we provide weapons to Ukraine, we ask two things. We ask them to do it in their self-defense, and we ask them to apply to the rule of law, in this case, humanitarian war rules. And that's very important, because when we look at the war in Gaza, we also felt after the 7th of October that Israel had the right to self-defense to a terrorist attack. So that is the principle there. But ever since, we, as the Netherlands, but also many other European countries, have said to Israel, if you conduct this war, you must also abide to the rules that we have internationally agreed upon when you conduct a war. And that is where we, of course, have many doubts, because there are too much, too many civil casualties, children dying and people also dying from hunger in Gaza. And that is why we are pushing for humanitarian aid. That's why we're telling Israel now, you have to comply by the rule of the court that is said, you have to stop in Rafah. We have to have a ceasefire, and you have to start planning for the future, which is a two-state solution. And that is the political pressure that we constantly and increasingly are putting on Israel, and we will discuss it with Israel in the EU-Israel Association Council, which I think is a very significant step. So the principles are absolutely applicable to all situations, and I think that is where we have to be, you know, really clear on that. And that's also the type of dialogue that we need to have. So therefore, I'm glad you raised the question. Thank you.
Admiral.
Antoine, yes? I think on the intelligence sharing as stabilizing, examples include the release of intelligence in advance of the Ukraine invasion. We believe had a stabilizing effect on the situation in the ways in which it helped the allies prepare for the invasion to ameliorate the effects of the invasion itself and enable Ukraine and our European allies to prepare for the invasion itself. Clearly, it builds trust among us all to share intel, either the real-time sharing of tracks or sharing the deeper analysis of it, and that is, to some extent, a trite example of it. And then, and there are some deeper methods, and by this is some of the things that we're working on, particularly in the Indopacom mission network, what we've worked in CENTCOM for the CENTCOM Partner Network, where the information is not necessarily unobtainium in parlance, but the sources and methods are, and that is to, you know, build a filter so that the sources and methods are transparent, are opaque to all of the users, but the tracks themselves are usable to all members, which enables us to get the information to all, but helps us protect some of those elements that may not necessarily be shareable, but provides the utility of the information. And all of that builds the utility of the information of it all. And then when you are in those awkward situations where you've got two partners that are at odds with one another, and I have been in this situation, you know, my duty before being US Pacific Fleet was I was US Naval Forces Central Command, where, you know, I was directly serving in a network with Pakistan before making the trip to Hawaii, when directly serving in a network with India. It's just having the integrity to never betray a partner to the other, and then asking that partner to trust that that's the case. And I never have. And whether they believe me or not, I hope that they do, but I can't give any simpler, I can't give any simpler answer than that. So, you know, I think that's, that's as far as I can go.
Admiral Van Die.
I have two remarks, one about architecture. I think we have a lot of tools, and we still have. We have relevant tools, but the question is much more how we use these tools. I could give an example with Unclos. We have the tool, everybody is happy with this tool, but the way it's used leads to possible confrontation. And so, it's a question of using the tool. And so, if you trust arbitrary court, if you trust UN Council decisions, then it works. If you don't, what about tools? Second point is about intelligence. In the years preceding the war in Ukraine, we had two major treaties that were working. The first was the INF Treaty, and the other one was CFE, Convention of Force in Europe. And these treaties were to prevent military escalation on the stuff. And in fact, it was intelligence that showed at the beginning that the Russians were building through the SSC-8, a tool which was not afforded by the INF. And finally, both US and Russia had to withdraw this treaty. At the beginning of the war, the Russians went out of CFE. And so, is the point of Admiral Papparo about intel. In fact, strategic intel should lead to mutual understanding. And when this understanding is not there, intel just shows how deep are the mistrusts and the unconfidence between the partners.
All right. I'll take another round of questions. Dimitri Vestapulo.
Thank you. Dimitri from the Financial Times. I have a question for Ambassador Tsui. You talk about China learning lessons from previous wars and suggest that you're only interested in peace, and yet what your Coast Guard is doing at the Second Thomas Shoal right now has turned that shoal into a flashpoint that could turn into a conflict. So my question is, how worried are you that Chinese Coast Guard activities could trigger an incident, whether a death of a Filipino sailor or something else, which would then trigger the US-Philippines Mutual Defense Treaty? Or do you think that the Americans wouldn't come to the defense of the Philippines, and that's why you're willing to take the actions that you're taking? Thank you.
And from the double I double S, Ben Schrier.
Thank you. My question is to Admiral Papparo. Admiral, I would like to take the conversation back to deterrence. Arguably, enhancing the credibility of allied deterrence is required, requires more collective warfighting capability in this region, including more multilateral defense planning and command and control. and control arrangements, but there is no Asian NATO that could facilitate that. So I wondered if you could comment on some of the opportunities that you see to building more effective multilateral allied command and control arrangement to enhance deterrence. Thank you.
Joe Bo.
I'm really happy to see Asia-Pacific appear in the title, which is normally not the case, when people normally talk about Indo-Pacific. Be it a deterrence or reassurance, it's basically about China-US competition or rivalry. In the past, I worry more about South China Sea, because we have too many cases of ships and aircraft getting too close. But now I start to worry more about Taiwan. The reason is because of the newly elected leader. When it comes to China's type of policy, I think I can characterize this with two key words. One is confidence, another is patience. So with China's growth of strength, would China become more confident about eventual peaceful eradication, or would it become more impatient, yeah, so as to resort to use of force? Theoretically, it is just a kind of a struggle of these two questions. But here, what I want to say is, the United States now would play a more important role than ever, yeah, in making this situation more, less volatile, because this leader just described himself as a pragmatic Taiwanese independence worker. So that is why I'm extremely happy to see today that my defense minister actually had a meeting, long overdue meeting with American Secretary of Defense, even if they're talking about the same issues, I would be very much happy. So, and I hope, yeah, because this is so, so important in that, at least it would provide one more chance for Chinese Defense Minister to talk to his counterpart, one more chance. So I hope they would really make best use of such chances, yeah. In the future, what can characterize our relationship? In the Cold War, it is trust but verify. As I have written in Foreign Affairs, I hope in the future it is trust but talk. Let's talk more. It's a comment rather than question. Thank you.
Thank you. And No D Lan.
Yes, thank you very much. Lan from the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam. So this is a question for all our esteemed speakers. My question is that we've heard a lot about reassuring partners and allies, but what about reassuring rivals or adversaries? To what extent, in your view, is it necessary to reassure countries that have different views or even rivaling interests? And what can your respective country do better to reassure competitors? Thank you.
Thank you. Perhaps we'll start Admiral Paparo with you around the question of command and control.
Well, first, on the topic, we are seeing increasingly, we are seeing, first, first, there are a number of pre-existing alliances in the Indo-Pacific that long predate the, you know, the last few years, and of course, going on 70, 70 years or more. The US-Japan alliance, the US-Philippine alliance, the US-Australia alliance, and increasingly in exercises, exercise Keen Edge for the Defense of Japan, exercise PAC Sentry. These exercises are becoming trilateral and multilateral. And my predecessor has had as, as his initiatives, initiatives that I have continued to implement networks, the Indo-PACOM mission network among them, networks that will enable us to serve together and to operate together, so that we can operate together, so that we can operate effectively together. And so, you know, I think that increasingly our interoperability is growing with the growing threats. You know, at this time, I don't think that it's necessary that the region coalesces into a larger treaty organization at this time. I think that that would be condition dependent into, you know, based on the threat and based on the conditions. I think that we inherently achieved the effect. I think that it's conditions-based. I think the technical capability is there. I think the region sufficiently is practiced to operate as a, as a coalition at this time. We certainly exercise quite a bit together. We're never satisfied with the levels of interoperability that we have. I think that's a military virtue, is to never be satisfied with your levels of proficiency. I don't foresee a collective defense organization throughout the Indo-Pacific, but I could envision a coalition that could quickly coalesce and fight together if there was a sufficient threat in the Pacific that threatens the, threatened the security and stability in the Pacific.
Yes, I mean, speaking about, you know, growing threats and your treaties and alliances here in the region, Ambassador Tsui, there was a direct question for you regarding the Chinese Coast Guard around Second Thomas Shoal. I wonder whether you could comment on that.
I think I have to make it clear at the beginning that what the Chinese Coast Guard is doing is law enforcement action. It's not military campaign. It's very different. And Chinese Coast Guard, we are only patrolling in our own territory or territorial waters or areas under our jurisdiction. We're only defending our legal rights. We are not traveling very far. Maybe honestly, unlike the US Coast Guard, we do not travel to the coast of California or Florida. We stay in areas close to China. Maybe you are eager to come to help us, but thank you very much. But for the dispute between China and the Philippines, there has been disputes for quite some time among some of the claimant countries to South China Sea. And with these countries, China has worked very hard to develop some mutual understanding and try to develop ways of managing the differences, and continue to develop overall bilateral relations, continue to have possible cooperation on the sea. That's why we have had DOC, Declaration of Conduct, and we are working very hard on the COC, Code of Conduct. Hopefully, we could conclude it very soon. And under the framework of the ASEAN plus, we have had a number of cooperation projects, maritime cooperation projects. So things could work very well and very peacefully without any external interference. Honestly, there is external interference. There is some attempt from outside the region to take advantage of the existing disputes, to make it worse, to make things more difficult to solve. That's the situation we are facing today. And of course, we in China, like every other country, we have to defend our own territorial integrity, our own sovereign rights. There's no, no alternative to that. I think all normal country will do that. But still, we want to have peaceful negotiations in accordance with the principles of DOC, that all these disputes should be worked out among the sovereign states directly concerned through peaceful means. We are committed to that. We have done this all along, and we're ready to do it going forward. But I don't think anybody should have the illusion that they could easily violate Chinese sovereignty and territorial integrity without any cost. So in this regard, I think a frequent reference to defense cooperation treaty with this country or that country could only be seen as an open threat. Such coercive statements will not help us to de-escalate the tension, but it will only work to escalate the tension. So it's very clear that what is the real intention? Is the intention to de-escalate or to escalate? Why is there so much reference, so frequent reference to defense cooperation treaties with no reference to DOC, to THC, the ASEAN Treaty of Amity and Cooperation? If there's more reference to the latter, then it's much better hope that we will control and manage and solve the disputes eventually. Thank you.
Minister. Minister Olegin.
Well, I just had a comment on the comment, on how could we also reassure our rivals, depending of course on who they are? Because I think it all boils back to what kind of world do we want? And can we agree on a world where might does not make right? Can we agree on a rule-based world? And coming from a smaller country or medium-sized economy, we are really strong believer in partnerships and alliances like the European Union, like NATO. And these organizations have partnerships with other countries and organizations. It's all connected. And therefore, of course, you need treaties, you need international rules, and we had them. We had treaties on disarmament, we had treaties on how not to use certain weapons. But then you also have to be able to depend upon those who then are your rivals to also abide by those treaties. So I think also if you look from the perspective of not being a superpower, not being a global power, but being one of many countries, then of course, there is strength in numbers, and there is strength in unity, as we see now with the support of Ukraine. And just one example where you, you try to find the right way forward is in, for instance, in Iraq, where we have been fighting with many other allies, we've been fighting terrorism. And we are still there at the request of Iraq to support the transition to a safe and prosperous country. And that is, I think, how you, how you reach out and how you show commitment in an increasingly difficult world. And that is what it all comes back to, that's trust. Can you trust your partners to do what they promised to do?
Thank you. Andreas Seditias Salim.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Andreas from Indonesia. And Ambassador Tsui, first of all, this question is for you, not because you are the only diplomat on the panel, please believe me, but simply because you raise a very interesting question, still about the new security order, the world global security governance and structure. So I'm coming from the Southeast Asia, of course, and from my personal point of view is that we have a bigger problem that we face together. Before we, before this world having the next war, maybe we're gonna be all gone because of the natural disasters, tsunamis, volcano blasts, earthquakes, and everything. So we have a bigger problem. And this kind of rivalry, I think we have to really settle it down, because we have a bigger problem to deal with together. But you lay a very unique ground on maybe we have to find a common understanding on this issue, world global security governance or structure or new security, that kind of term. Maybe let's just put this discussion to the academic level. What kind of new security or new world global security governance did you have? And of course, I would like to hear also from the other three panelists, or if you are okay with the current governance structure, it's okay. And let's find the common grounds and where we can work together, because, you know, we really have to go past this rivalry. We have more important issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question to Justin Basquiel.
Justin from the Philippines. This is addressed to the representative from China. So you discussed the Asian way of diplomacy. I would love to have a bit more discussion. What exactly do you mean by this, and how effective do you think this has been in managing tensions in the region? From the Philippine perspective, of course, we've heard buzzwords like peaceful rise, et cetera, contemplative and deliberative discussions. The South China Sea Code of Conduct will come soon. We've heard that for, quite frankly, many years already. How is this different from power politics by just called another name? So please expound, like, what exactly do you mean by Asian way of diplomacy? How exactly does this differ from the traditional power politics diplomacy we've seen in previous years and even in Europe? So I think because right now, the concern is that China is sort of confident already to lecture Europe how to manage its conflict, but the conflict between China and the Philippines is still simmering at the moment. So I think China should be a bit more prudent in this regard. So can you please expound what exactly this means for you? Thank you.
And Ivan Watson.
I also had a question for Ambassador Tsui. You talked in your opening remarks about wanting to bring people back to the negotiating table when it came to Ukraine. Today, China's Ministry of Foreign Affairs announced China would not be participating in peace talks for Ukraine in Switzerland next month. Can you explain that contradiction?
All right. And then the final question to Takeetsugu Sato.
Thank you. My name is Sato from Asahi, Japan. My question goes to Admiral Paparo. As you mentioned, the importance of integrated deterrence to, in order to deter Chinese aggression and to improve operational efficiency with allies, Japan and the US announced to upgrade the command and control frameworks at the latest summit meeting. So to do, strengthen the deterrence, would Indo-PACOM create a permanent joint team in Japan? Or does a US force upgrade the status of a US FJ commander from a three-star to four-star? Thank you. Sorry for detailed question.
All right. Mr. Sato is over there. No, we like the detailed questions. That's excellent. Thank you. Ambassador Tsui, you had quite a few questions for you. I wonder whether I could turn to you first.
Well, thank you. I think I have to apologize to my fellow panelists. I'm using up too much time. Of course, this is another press conference. Let me try. Let me try to be as brief as possible. First, about this idea of a new security concept. I think we are actually faced with a number of growing global challenges. We refer to AI, climate change, and others, and maybe disease, natural disaster. I think you made very good points about all these real challenges. So we should not see security as a very narrowly defined concept, that just military versus military, or just weapons versus weapons. We have much bigger things. The human survival could be at stake. Then none of this could be dealt with by any country, single-handed. No matter how powerful the country could be, it cannot handle all these things all by itself. We have to work together. So we have to focus on such much bigger, common challenges, common security threats. Even we still have differences on some of the minor, maybe not quite minor, but not so major, security issues. We could still try to work out the differences, but we have to focus on the growing challenges globally. So that's why we need some new understanding of what is security really means for us. And we have to try to build a new architecture that will be effective and sufficient to respond to such challenges. Then about the, what is going on between China and the Philippines, actually, it has not been, the situation has not been like this all along. Just a couple of years ago, we were quite successful in managing the differences and still developing bilateral relations very successfully. So things were much more quiet, stable then than now. So we have to think about what has changed, what has brought about all the changes. But as far as we But as far as we stand, we still want to have communication, negotiations with our Filipino friends, try to work out the issues constructively, quietly, peacefully, of course, and bilaterally. We do have the guiding principles. We do have the working mechanisms. We do have the proper way of handling these difficult issues, like mutual respect, taking care of each other's comfort level, and so on, so forth. We're still ready to do that. But honestly, we have to ask ourselves, what has changed in the last couple of years? Then about the Ukraine issue, we always support any effort that will bring about a peaceful solution to the conflicts. But in order to any effort to succeed, it has to have both parties there, Ukrainians and Russians. Without the direct parties to the conflict there, how could you work on a peaceful solution? It's impossible. And it has to be, has to have the equal participation of all the parties. You must give people equal footing in order to have serious discussion. And it has to give fair treatment of all the peace proposals. On that basis, you can find the best way, the most effective way out. So we are still working very hard with others to build up such condition, so that once a peace conference is convened, it could lead to peaceful results. It could stop the conflict. It could restore peace in the region. We are still committed to that. And what is interesting is now, people are very often reminding us that it has been China's traditional position to respect sovereignty and territorial integrity against foreign aggression, and so on, so forth. It's very interesting, because we had the same position during the Kosovo War. We had the same position during the war in Iraq. We had the same position on the situation in Syria, in Libya, and so on, so forth. We have always made these points. Now people are taking over our talking points and read them out to us without due respect to intellectual property rights. So there should be no doubt about China's position. We always stand for peace. We stand for negotiated solution. But we have to create the condition that will lead us to a peaceful solution. If the goal is to give anyone of the two sides more advantage, then there's no hope for peace. So we have to see it very clearly. We have to make it very clear that this is a conference that will lead us to peace, not a conflict that will continue the conflict. Thank you.
Admiral Paparo.
This is the Japan C2 question? Okay, thank you. Yes, it is the intention of the President of the United States and Prime Minister Kishida to upgrade the C2 arrangement for the US and Japan. Presently, US forces in Japan is a sub-unified commander, but there is the intention of the two heads of state to upgrade the relationship. We'll convene a very high-level team of experts to see what must be done to upgrade that to a higher level of command, that will be more capable. I won't say what that rank grade will be, but the command itself will be more capable that will respect, you know, a higher need to defend Japan, given the, you know, the more threatening security situation in the Indo-Pacific. Thank you, Sanosan. Aragato Gassas.
Minister Olenchuk.
Well, just a very brief comment. I think we have to worry about the security architecture, the worldwide security architecture, because the one that we have is not working. And if it doesn't work in the case of Ukraine, and if it doesn't work in the case of Israel, why should it work in any other case, also in this region? So that's something that really worries me. And I also, I would like to thank the ambassador for his points and his reassuring words on the position of China. But I think also the question asked on the peace summit in Switzerland, yes, it's true that it is not the peace summit where Russia and Ukraine will be sitting at the table, but it could be a step towards creating that situation. And that is why I regret that China does not use its position as one of the countries that has an intense dialogue with President Putin. I believe he has visited China 19 times during his presidency, and also very recently. To take a step in that direction, I think the presence of China in Switzerland would help.
And Admiral Von Dier.
Yes, I'd like to come back on the architecture question, which is somehow a sort of egg-and-n question. Is an architecture the consequence or the origin point of stability? It's a big question. I think the actual architecture has been built on the edge of World War II and Cold War. And during that time, we experienced very difficult moments. And when we read again what happened, for example, the Cuba crisis, the, what we call the missile war in Europe in the eighties, I think we learned a lot. And what is today in use in terms of architecture is a result of this experience. A lot of countries participate after the end of the Cold War to build up, to reinforce this architecture. And so it's a given, it's a gift received from previous generations. So I would advocate not, we have an expression in French, I don't know if it works in English, not to throw the baby with the bathwater. I think it's somehow easier to reinforce what we have in the end than to advocate for zero table, a ground zero experience for a new architecture.
Thank you. So we're going to go to the last round of questions. Anshu Roy.
Thank you. This is Anshu Roy from Rambus, United States. My question is for all the panelists, primarily Admiral Paparo. We talked about the mission network, we talked about intelligence sharing, and we talked a lot about sources and methods and those kinds of things. How do you feel about the ability to share predictive intelligence derived purely from open source in a much more dynamic way across whoever you wish to share, in a sort of a bilateral, trust-based arrangement powered by technology? So that it's not just sharing in a sort of an episodic manner, but in a much more regular manner? To then, at least in theory, address questions such as measuring deterrence, such as finding ways to build trust through data and observations, and potentially creating a more trust, but as someone here said, talk kind of environment?
Thank you. And Wang Dong.
Thank you. We're a scholar of international relations. I actually teach deterrence at university. So I greatly appreciate the excellent presentations and discussion by the distinguished panel of the great deal. I will make a very brief comment here. My remarks is actually about the definitions of deterrence and reassurances. There is actually abundant literature on deterrence, and the literature usually discusses about reassurances in the context of deterrence failure. And scholars have collected historical data, and empirically speaking, only about 33% chances deterrence will succeed. In other words, 70% chances, more likely than not, deterrence will fail. And studies show that deterrence fails not because you didn't give sufficient reassurance to your partners or allies, rather deterrence fails because you didn't give sufficient reassurance to your adversary or competitor. Here's, I would like to refer to writings of leading international relations scholars, such as Professor Tom Christensen of Columbia University. And Professor Christensen's writing actually tells us that one lesson about making your deterrence successful is that never cornering your adversary, never making your adversaries or competitors believe that they have nothing to lose but to confront. So if that happens, actually deterrence will likely, more likely than not, will fail. So rather reassurance to your adversary or competitor should be an integral part of a successful deterrence strategy. So I just wanted to make a very brief comment here, and I do hope, you know, I can contribute a little bit to our discussion here. Thank you.
Thank you. And a final question to Richard Walker.
Thanks very much. Yeah, Richard Walker from Deutsche Welle. Yeah, that just really sparked a thought in my mind that has been going on in my mind through this conversation. We've been talking about deterrence mostly as if it's something that only Western powers, American allies, do. But of course, it's also something that China does, it's something that Russia does. And I'm just curious to throw a little bit into the conversation, a case of deterrence, which is pretty universally regarded as inappropriate and unacceptable. That's the nuclear threat by Vladimir Putin, where he's attempting to deter certain types of Western intervention. And whether or not he's successful kind of remains to be seen. Any thoughts, reflections on that, on a form of deterrence that I think is unacceptable? And of course, Ambassador Chu, I'd be particularly interested to hear your thoughts on that.
Thank you very much. So I think we have a wide range of questions and topics that I think the entire panel can interject on for some concluding thoughts, as well as we approach quarter past the hour. But one question that I had, just to throw it in the mix, is, you know, this concept of integrated deterrence as well. Does that increase tension? I mean, we had the conversation, or we had the point that security is much larger, but that also means that you have a lot more touch points to escalate and de-escalate. So does that help, or does that not help? Just a left-of-field thought there. But Admiral Paparo, perhaps I could go to you first?
Well, I think there's actually, there's a nice way to integrate all of the themes, and it's really the themes of complete and incomplete information. And another book that I will add to Professor Christensen's book that Mr. Wang discussed is Robert Jervis and Mr. Baker's in the room, Jim Baker's in the room here somewhere. Are you in the room, Jim? Jim Baker's in the room here somewhere, too. Is Robert Jervis's Perception and Misperception in World Politics, which is, everybody talks about deterrence as if everybody has complete information, and we don't. We don't have complete information about the other. There's incomplete information about what the other knows. There is cultural problems about each other, and Ambassador Chu probably knows more about the United States of America than any PRC citizen on the entire planet. And the ambassador is truly an Americanophile, if such a word exists, because I do know that you like Americans. I know that from our personal relationship. But there's cultural differences, there's all manner of reasons why we have incomplete information about each other. And if you are in the business of national security, and if you don't have an appreciation for your own ignorance about the other side, if you don't have a respect for your own ignorance, go get a job at the Home Depot or something, get into another line of work, because, you know, you have no business being in national security. On Anshu's point, probably more can be derived from open source than can be derived from the unique pieces of intelligence that we cherish. And through mass data analytics, and the use of SET theory, and the use of Bayes' theorem, and the use of neural networks, you can derive probabilities, not to predict, but to forecast and to make decisions. And then by building recursive loops to be able to test and retest, and this is what we're after within AI as we close on building algorithms that help us get more and more accurate. And this is the zenith of what we're after. And coming back to Dr. Kissinger on AI, if you abdicate information, if you abdicate these decisions to a machine instead of making sure that there's human agency over these decisions, go back to the Home Depot, go back to the Home Depot once again. And so I think that these are the points, is that a fundamental respect for always questioning your assumptions about what the other side knows. Coming back to the point that Mr. Zhu made about being grateful for the fact that the more that we communicate with one another, knowing each other's body language, there's no substitute for being in one another's company, learning more about each other and about each other's intentions, not relying on one single source, but multiple sources, and learning each other's intentions. And it's not just about deterring, but it's about cooperating. Deterring is our highest duty. Finding common ground is our highest duty. We don't want to fight, but there are issues on which we are, it's to some extent, intractable. Okay? So we're going to have to cooperate on the things that we can, we're going to have to just agree to disagree on the things that we can't, and we're going to have to find common ground on the things that we can. And there are ways that we can use machines in order to understand things better, and that's all I got to say. Home Depot.
Thank you very much.
For those of you that are not from the United States, it's a home improvement store.
Yes, exactly. Minister Olenchuk, maybe not a comment on Home Depot?
No, perhaps a comment on the question on the nuclear threat as part of deterrence, which is of course very, well, as was mentioned also by the French admiral, also in NATO, it's a part of deterrence. And I think we have to be very, very careful about this, because if rhetoric is used to sort of scare other countries, in this world, it's not a bipolar world where you had two powers that had nuclear weapons, and that could agree, which is wise, I think, that we use them only for deterrence. We don't use them. It's the end of the world. There's been proliferation of nuclear weapons, so it's very, very dangerous to suggest or to use it in your rhetoric, to provoke, to scare, and to divide. And I think our response has to be very, very calm. We will not be provoked. We will stick to our belief, which is, as long as there are nuclear weapons in the world, we as NATO countries also have nuclear weapons. We never want to use them. And the second thing is that we didn't much touch upon that, but deterrence and reassurance, how do you do that in a world where you are sometimes in between war and peace, in the gray zone? And there are many things happening there that people don't see, but that we know are happening. Hybrid warfare, cyber attacks, sabotage, or preparations for sabotage. These are all potentially dangerous and destabilizing things that happen. And how do we address that? How do we address the fact that countries are being destabilized from within with disinformation? Vulnerable countries, small countries. We can We cannot go in there with military force to address these issues. How do we do reassurance and deterrence in those cases? So I'd like to leave you with that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister. Admiral Von Dier.
I'd like to come back on the question of predictive intelligence. I think the spread of AI makes, gives sense to that question, but I think it's a very dangerous one. In fact, I do think personally that it's the doomsday machine. In fact, why? It was the discussion we had before about sharing intelligence. Sharing intelligence is just what it is. It's not expectations. It just shows that you respect something, you have proof, you have a smoking gun, something like this. When you go for predictive intelligence, in fact, you may put on the layer of facts expectations, and then go for calculus and anticipate the calculus to modify what is expected. Deterrence is exactly the opposite, and especially the nuclear one. When you run nuclear deterrence, it's precisely a tool which diffuses expectations and calculus, because there is no victory theory about nuclear war. And so if you go for predictive intelligence, you can think that AI and computers will drive you to the good solution, which I don't think is the case. There is an economist, a U.S. one, which says the inevitable never happens, it's the unexpected that happens. It's Keynes. And so if you look at history, and perhaps some people around the table know the book, it's The Sleepwalkers. The Sleepwalkers, it's a Christopher Clack book that shows how European leaders' expectations at the edge of World War I drove to a catastrophic confrontation. So I do not trust that much predictive intelligence.
And final words, Ambassador Tsui.
Thank you, madam. I think all countries have national security concerns, very legitimate concerns, and all countries have to defend its national security interests. And in this regard, I think soldiers and diplomats are just the same. Our whole mission is to defend our national security interests. That's it. Maybe we use different ways, but our goal, our mission is the same. But in order to have better security for all, we have to have goodwill and good faith. So if the intention is to always have an upper hand or have dominance over others, then you can never reassure others that you are working for the common good. Even your deterrence may not work. So in this regard, I would like to echo many of the points made by Admiral Paparo just now. We have to aim at the common interests, common mutual needs, and what are the common goals we should try to achieve in the long run? Then, with this goal in mind, we could work on the specific differences. We could choose this tactic or other tactic. Only when we share the same goal, then reassurances could be convincing. Or even people want to use necessary deterrence, it could also be convincing. So I think this is very important. But in order to achieve this kind of mutual understanding, and we also have to overcome some of the, maybe overcome is not the right word, to take care of the existing cultural differences. Maybe the same idea could mean very different things in different cultures, but that shows more the need for us to have better mutual understanding. And once we make some reassurance, once we make some commitment, we should have good faith that we'll implement it. So I certainly agree with the point made by Admiral Paparo, that we should approach things like AI from this point of view. And I believe no algorithm, no matter how strong it might be, could really replace human hearts. So we should work together to build better mutual understanding, and in this regard, I think the Shangri-La Dialogue will continue to play a key role. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ambassador, and thank you to the whole panel for your excellent remarks and for the food for thought that you have given us to take away and deliberate more on over the next two days. The fact that we are five minutes over and the room is still absolutely packed, I think, speaks to the importance of this topic. And I know that you will all take away your thoughts and continue that discussion as we pursue the very noble objective of defense diplomacy and dialogue here at the Shangri-La Dialogue this year. But before you leave, please do join me in thanking the panelists.